The following program is the first Tuesday of the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
Welcome, everybody. We're a little bit late here, but we'll get going. Welcome, everybody, to our regular schedule, well, rescheduled city council meeting. Today is Wednesday, April 5, 2023, and I will call this meeting to order by doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Barb, do you want to read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us?
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks, Barb. And would you also take role for us?
Brian Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra?
Here.
Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Scott Porczatsky?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thanks, Barb. And do you want to start by introducing yourself?
Barb Noak, interim city clerk.
Aaron Jensen, city administrator.
Eric Bailey, library director.
Jared Requieu, community and economic development.
Stephanie Reif, finance director.
Justin Behrens, director of public works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec director.
Paul Benjewell, captain, police department.
Josh, say something. Josh Warner is also with us, but he's in the back room operating the cameras and so on, who's in charge of our IT communications. All right. We have a consent agenda. What you see on the agenda is, under consent agenda, is we have no additions to that. So if you're okay with it as it is, we would need a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Chestnut?
Second.
Second by Martin, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Before we approve the regular agenda, I just want to, during the, we actually have two closed sessions tonight. We have one during the regular city council meeting, right at the, as you probably already have seen, we have one that's almost right at the end of our council meeting. And then we also have a committee of the whole meeting, where we're also going to have a closed session. I'm just asking that you put issues and, or I'm sorry, communications and recommendations of the mayor, if we could just put that in front of, in front of letter L there, just so that, because staff is going to be leaving before we go into closed session. And I won't ask them to come back again. So if you're okay with that, that one change, if you don't mind. And then we would need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Peterson, that we approve the agenda with that one change. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We have a couple of certificates here. We have a presentation of a, these are both for the police department here. So we have a presentation of a certificate of appreciation for Wes Zuby for his 10 years of service to the city of Wapaka. Wes isn't here tonight, so Paul, if you would just grab this one, please. And then also Jerry Allen, who also has been with us for 10 years. So if you would, just thank them for their 10 years. Thanks, Paul. All right. And then next up, under our non-agenda items and announcements, we have the annual report of the Parks and Rec, and Laura is going to do that for us tonight. Wherever you want to go. Yeah.
I did send this electronically, but I've got three extra copies if anybody wants a paper copy.
Everybody need a copy?
Yep. Thank you.
Erica, you know, sorry, Erica, and I maybe am putting you on the spot, but as the chairman of the Parks and Rec, anything you want to say now, or?
No, I, we looked at the report in our, in our meeting, and it looks fantastic, and you're about to all see it. So yeah, I don't have any things specifically to say about it, but they did a great job.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna try and do both these things here. So we did put our new board members on here, even though Kristin Dasher started in 2023. I would like to thank Pat Fair for his work in, as he concluded out 2022. And we updated all of our staff photos. I do want to just take a second to read this, this introductory paragraph. "2022 was a big year for Parks and Rec with a new senior center coordinator, rec supervisor, and director. We want to thank the community for their understanding and patience as we all adjust to our new positions. A few highlights of 2022 include the Swan Park Project groundbreaking, the start of our new inclusive and adaptive rec program for individuals with special needs called Wapaka Area All-Stars, an incredible boom in pickleball and coed volleyball, and continued support from our community and local townships. As always, we strive to continue to improve our community for everyone to enjoy." And we'll go through our report now. Our mission statement, I love this last part that talks about enriching the lives and providing a creative recreation program, quality parks, and engaging community events. And as I said today in the lunch and learn, we are always striving to meet the needs of our community. So if there are other needs out there, please don't be shy and let us know what they are. And obviously, to create strong community through lifelong recreation. So on this next page, instead of, because the audit is still in process, instead of giving you bare numbers, we gave you two pie charts, which shows our revenue and our expenditures. And as you can see, our main source of revenue is from our intergovernmental funding that we receive from the three townships and the city of Wapaka is included in that. And we do get some money through the youth program and the adult programs, the burials. And as you can see in our expenses, it's all pretty even. We do spend a majority of our money, not a majority, a larger chunk on the parks, but when you think of all the renovations we have to do to the roofs and the siding of the pavilions, and even taking into consideration the fact that gas went up a lot in 2022, and, and all of those other, other expenditures that occur within parks. Some really interesting and exciting facts, as mentioned already, we started our rec program for ages five through 18. And River Ridge Trail System has about 26 miles on it, and it's 27 years old. And for those, for me, I grew up here until 2000. I lived here till 2000. I didn't even know it existed until I moved back in 2017. So it's been around a long time. We broke ground on the city's first ever splash pad, and we're still hoping for completion at the, at the end of the spring. And Eco Park, we're trying to breathe some new life into that park that's over by the airport. And so I added in here that there's 14 acres of grassland and 18 acres of woods that surround the Wapaka River. So it's, it's a very extensive park, and it's beautiful, and we're trying to, to get the community members back out there. We are busy working on the boardwalk reconstruction process, and the Eco Park asphalting has been done from the building to the boardwalk. That was done in 2022. And as already mentioned, but maybe not in this detail, our playground and splash pad will be the first all-inclusive playground for Wapaka, which is also very exciting. We do have 14 parks, and we also have Lakeman Field and the River Ridge Natural Area, totals about 300 acreage. Our parks reservations for the year, you can see the various months and the usage. And I will tell you that that Upper South Park Shelter is reserved the most and the fastest because of the available kitchen. We had 163 total rentals in 2022. These were our shelters available in 2022. And as you know, in 2023, we're going to start to rent out the Swan shelters when we are finished getting all of these Swan tournaments and stuff into the system. The Shoreline Restoration Project was completed in 2022. And if you have not gotten the time to go out to Riverside Park, it is absolutely gorgeous. And if you are an angler and you enjoy fly fishing, that is a perfect place to do it here in town. Some other improvements, as mentioned, the groundbreaking, the Eco Park enhancements. So we do want to breathe new life. And what we've done so far is the Wapaka Foundry Display is working. We asphalted the boardwalk, and we've updated the amphitheater sign. And this year, we've got an exciting program starting in May. We're going to have all third graders from the city, including the CEC and possibly the Christian Academy, and all of the people from the WLC head over there for a program, a day-long program. Some facility updates. Last year, we purchased a dump truck, put new siding on Lakeman Batting Cage Shed, re-roofed South Park Lower Shelter, painted the beach house bathrooms. They look really great. We've had a lot of really wonderful community partnerships. One of those include the airport movie that we showed back in, I believe it was June of last year. And it was before I got on, so I can't give you an exact date on that. And we have a ton of really wonderful supporters that helped us with the medallion hunt and offered various gift cards or other amenities for their, for their localities. And then Halloween on Main is a giant partnership with all of these collaborative efforts, and that was a huge success. We estimated anywhere from 2,000 to 4,000 people on Main Street on that night. And we have a lot of really wonderful prizes for the virtual ice fishing, and Bank First provides the money for those prizes. And the medallion hunt, just want to acknowledge Piggly Wiggly, Schindig, Aquamos, Adventure Outfitters, Little Fat Gretchen's, Nelson's Shell, and Bank First. They are all wonderful participants. And new this year Halloween party, if you didn't get a chance to go or didn't hear about it, we had Miller's Pumpkins out there as a new tradition. And also, the drama club from the high school put the Haunted Trail, which was a huge success out there as well. We already talked about the movie at the airport, which, again, far exceeded anybody's expectations. The food truck completely sold out, so when we do it again, we're going to have to get some more food out there. Ice fishing tournament went really well. We had 26 submissions. And let's talk about that senior center for a second. One of those entities within the rec department that just continues to thrive and grow. We are literally running out of space in our biggest gym, and we are continually ordering new cardio drumming balls and buckets and drumsticks because it just, people keep on coming and adding on. We have the advisory board listed, and some of the things that, that we are always participating in, Arts on the Square, Summer Nights, Fallarama, Halloween on Main, Assisted Living, 623 senior members. Check-ins, 11,836. You can see here our most attended classes and what we are offering in 2022, or what was new in 2022. And there are our cardio drummers at the Fourth of July Parade. Our youth center is still going very strong. We had 2,001 teens attend Friday and Saturday nights in 2022. Here you can see our staff and some pictures of the students. Leslie did a great job with her introduction here. I'll let you read that on your own. And then she shares some really great pictures of this year. We had some really incredible high school students that not only coached, but helped volunteer and help with our programs, both with basketball and flag football. And, and we're just really hoping to continue that tradition. She's been spending a lot of time at the middle school, meeting with eighth graders to get them on board, and hopefully for the long haul. You can see here our enrollment. The youth are up top on top, and our adult league team participation is below. So the youth numbers, these are raw, individual numbers up on top. And youth soccer was huge, and baseball was big, swimming was big. With the adult league teams, coed volleyball spiked this year, as mentioned, and, and pickleball was really big as well. And then we just show you some really great pictures in review. These bridge pictures are of our after-school program that we do after summer school. And then we had 38 burials this year, 20 were cremains, and 18 were traditional burials. You can see the, the major months of those burials. And Casey's got a lot of, of funerals coming up now that the, the winter months are over. And then just a little history highlight from 1913 for your, for your viewing pleasure. What questions do you have?
Questions, comments? Everybody, Henry, go ahead.
I can't say enough for the, all the persons that have served through the years, and you guys have supported this effort. And I think we should be really proud, because this is a really strong asset for our community. You know, we all deserve to live in a beautiful place, and this gives us that. And certainly doesn't hurt for recruiting and that kind of thing. So, but it doesn't happen without the elected officials, you know, putting their money where their mouth is, because, you know, these improvements cost money. So thank you for that.
Paul.
Are you going to have a dedication and maybe pamphlets and things for the splash pad?
That sounds like a really great idea. The answer is yes.
She just thought of it.
Yes.
Now you're going to get mentioned.
Thank you, Paul, for the great idea.
You're welcome.
Other comments? Laura, thank you. Good presentation. And thank you for, you know, originally, we were asking her to do this at the second meeting in April, but we have quite a few things going on the second meeting, so I'm glad that we could move this one up to this meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time and for your support, as Henry had already mentioned.
Awesome. All right. Okay, let's move on in the agenda. We have public input. This is for a non-agenda item. Anybody that would like to make a statement that is not on the agenda, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Limit your time at the podium to three minutes or less. Any public input? New business. We have a request from Mike Strike of HH Heinder Brewing Company to expand outdoor service area for HH Heinder Headbutt Homebrew Competition on Saturday, April 22, 2023, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. I know Mike couldn't make it tonight, but Aaron, can you just fill us in?
I can. Yeah, so Mike called this morning, said he was planning to make it, and something came up where he couldn't. He apologized, wanted me to apologize to all council for him. He just explained the, the event as something, you know, you guys are probably used to Heinder Fest or seen the crowds there. He said that this is not anticipated to be anything like that. Tents in a similar location, parking will be unaffected except for where the tent location is. I know that he has, I believe, from noon until 10:00, he really thought it, it won't start until about 2:00, but they'll start setting up at noon. He thought they'd be all wrapped up by 9:00 PM. So pretty straightforward. Because of the lack of crowds, he is not planning or did not request to have a, a reserve deputy sheriff or police officer, so that will not be a part of it. I think those were the high points. But otherwise, I would say very similar to events that have been approved in the past, but maybe probably toned down from some of the larger ones that they have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? We would need a motion to approve, if you're okay with it?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Hagan, that we approve this request for HH Heinder Headbutt Homebrew Competition. I didn't have to say it again, but I want it. So, any further discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Aaron, thank you. Barb, thanks. Next up, we have a sale of airport hangar. Paul?
I was unable to attend the last meeting, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
No problem, Paul. So this is just a standard sale of an aircraft hangar lot lease at the airport. There's, looks like every other one. Nothing special or unique, but the process is, is it goes to Airport Board, gets approved there, and then comes to council for final approval. This is something that the Airport Board unanimously approved, so just looking for that final approval through council.
All right. So we're looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Hagan, that we approve the sale of Axel Aircraft Hangar Number 10 to Christopher Montgomery. Sale finalized, pending approval of the lot lease. Any discussion? Barbara, again, call the roll.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Next up, we have first reading of an ordinance, ordinance number 022023. This is amendment to chapter 17.153, RC Resource Conservation District. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor. So this one starts on page 27 of your packets. A red line starts on page 29 of your packets. So really, the intent of this ordinance change is to create a unique district specifically for our city parks. Right now, we do not have that unique district. They are a series of different zoning districts ranging from neighborhood business to agricultural to residential, just a wide variety. So as you could probably imagine, you know, trying to put a splash pad in a agricultural zone district is not typical. So to try to alleviate some headaches, and again, as Laura had just presented, you know, the parks are one of our greatest assets in a community, that open space, open recreation, open public recreation. Really want to try to protect those and allow for some flexibility of what we can do with them. So bringing forward an ordinance to change the Resource Conservation District to a Resource Conservation and Parks District. The intent of this district is to really only be city parks. The past intent of this district was to outline the wetland or environmentally sensitive areas. The trouble with that is that's really the DNR's purview, and as they change things, we would have to completely overhaul our zoning map to update those, and we haven't been doing that. So a lot of the areas we designated as resource conservation, you know, that were initially thought of as wetlands, you know, are no longer wetlands, or maybe those wetlands have expanded as the DNR has received better data. So it's just not the best way to use our zoning code in our zoning districts. The better way would be to, again, designate it to a specific use or purpose, which would be the parks. So this ordinance just sets out to create that unique district, you know, ensuring that we put in the intent of this district, what uses are permitted, what uses are conditional. And then we did add the standards in here, just again, trying to make the community cohesive. So we ended the branding and colors, so just that the structures being put into the parks should match our branding as best as possible, unless an alternative is, you know, reasonable, like Lakeman Field, that would, of course, have its own colors. So pretty simple and straightforward, but happy to take any questions. And if there aren't any here, and you think of some between now and the second reading, please let me know.
Thanks, Jared. Anybody have any questions or comments at this time? All right. As he said, this is the first reading, so we'll see this at our next meeting in, in this month, April. All right. Next up, then, we have another first reading of an ordinance, just so Justin can keep up with Jared. Ordinance number 082023, amendment to chapter 7.05, parent four, parking prohibited in certain specific, specified places.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm just trying to get on the board first, to keep, catch up to Jared, so.
Yeah, right.
I have a memo detailing the need for this adjustment on page 30 of the packet, followed by two arials, and then the ordinance itself with the wording. So this, we're adjusting section, or chapter seven, excuse me, which deals with our parking. So we allow parking pretty much everywhere with certain restrictions. When we want the restrictions, that's when we detail where that should be. Currently, there is no parking on Badger Street on the west side, or, excuse me, on State Street from Badger all the way up to Mill Street. The northern section, the center line, is shifted over to the west. The southern half has a turn lane that goes on to Badger Street. So what we're looking at here is future development of the old Catholic Church, so 223 Division Street. So there is a title in my report. I have Union. It should be Division. We utilize that parking lot for special events. The rec center does, our patrons that go to the rec center use that quite often. And that will very shortly be going away. So we'll be losing almost 30 stalls just from that lot going away. So in an effort to pick some stalls back up, we identified this area as this right turn lane is really underutilized. And the pattern for County E, which is, is a shared jurisdictional road, County E is pretty much north-south across the street. The right turn onto Badger just doesn't happen anymore. A lot of that has to do with Highway 10 being rerouted around the city. So what we have is an extra lane that's not really being used. So if we change it from a turn lane into a parking lane, we can easily pick up 10 stalls. So what the plan is, is to, from Badger up to the Angeles Apartments, stripe those in. So get rid of the turn lane striping, mark in the actual parallel parking, and then we get 10. We'd paint in a triangle so that we do not get close or block that driveway into the apartments. And then north of that, we would just leave for now. And that would be for special event parking, which would fall underneath our normal street parking ordinance. So the change is to adjust the restriction to be from East Fulton up to Mill Street. And like I said, it's a shared jurisdiction with the county. Highway Commissioner Casey Byersdorf is on board with this. He agrees. And I think that's it. So I'll open up the questions.
Thanks. We got a couple of questions here. Dave, you want to go?
Okay. Concerned always with the parking situations, and I was wondering, is it possible to angle parking, or is it just too short, or narrow? Could get maybe more spaces?
Well, on the west side, no. Where this, so where this turn lane is.
On the west side.
Yeah, west side, easily you can do a, a parallel, and that's all we can fit on the west side.
You can't fit.
The east side, potentially. What we'd like to do is add these ones now, see how it goes. And on the east side, consider a possible change in the future. But we'd have to evaluate how this is going. We don't want to completely jump in and create an issue. The concern we have is as, because Badger State is that awkward 45 degree, coming around the corner, going north on, past the rec center, people do go around that corner pretty quick. Sometimes we're rolling stop, and if somebody's backing out of the stall, having potential issues there. So, but it is something we're, we'll look at and consider.
If you did angle parking, people wouldn't be opening their doors right into traffic either. If you did angle parking, people wouldn't be opening their doors right into traffic either. Like you are when you're parallel parking, you're, you're right out in the street and angle your between cars, and you get a chance to look around.
Right. What's, what is there is the northbound lane is, is like eleven-foot lane, and then there is like this weird four-foot buffer strip, and then there's the actual parking. So, so there's room there, um, to potentially do an angle, but then also for the car doors. So.
So you, you're going to have parking all the way up to that four-way stop?
Yes.
You know, I, I witnessed, um, a truck taking a turn right there, and he ripped the no-truck sign right off of the pole that was right there, and that was without any cars there. I'm just nervous about trucks making that turn with cars right there.
Right. So, in our ordinance, in a different traffic code ordinance, we have to be behind the crosswalk, uh, at least twenty-five feet. So if you go, if you go visit on the opposite side on the east side, that first stall is marked twenty-five feet, and that's where we're planning on, on starting, uh, which would allow for turning movement and visibility at the same time. And, and if a truck is wanting to make that turn, they'll be on the inside of the intersection to allow them to swing it a little better. So, as far as the turning movement, I think that's even going to improve a little bit. So.
Okay.
Well, you know, with it being a four-way stop, and you can have two vehicles there at the same time, one that's going to turn to the right if you're, if you're on, uh, State Street facing, what is that, south? Um, you could have possibly a car turning right and one going straight or turning left. This way, that alleviates that. So it really does help traffic flow at that four-way stop. So I, I think it helps in a couple of ways. My only point is that I'm, this is probably more towards Laura, is, is when those seniors get out of their car, they got to be very careful when they're crossing the street, you know, because they're not going to go up to the crosswalk like they're supposed to and cross the street. So we're going to have to really monitor that. So, yeah.
I'm thinking they might get used a lot in the, in the evenings and weekends when people are visiting our new apartment right there on St. Mary's. Because that building's taken up pretty much a whole lot, so having a little off-street parking to support visitors to there might be helpful, too.
Yeah, that's right. You're right, because they are using, right now, we're using the parking lot, and we will not be able to use that parking lot anymore at St. Mary's.
So it's, it's public parking? So it's, anyone in the public can use it, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, on State Street.
On State Street, it will be public, yeah.
Are you thinking two-hour parking, or no time limit, just open? Yeah?
Well, you're still going to have the, they can't park there overnight.
No.
Correct.
Yeah. Anybody else? Colin, go ahead.
The, this might be ahead of the game, but the development that's proposed doesn't have egress or ingress on that side of the, are they going to, I, I haven't seen the proposed development. I don't know if they're going to try and come in to their lot there. I don't think so. It's kind of got a weird slope and whatnot.
Jared? Okay, the, the driveway for the new development is off of Division Street.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Anybody else? I know Aaron has something he wants to say.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, give a ton of credit to, this is a cool example of an issue that hit many departments. It started obviously with the development in Jared's department. That conversation happened very, very quickly. There was concerns brought up by the Park and Rec Department because of the senior center, and actually, I'm, I was really surprised to see how fast it came forward from the Public Works Department on a potential, um, action to help mitigate, um, a, a little negative out of a positive, which is the development. So, just thank you, guys. That's cool.
Trying to figure out if that was a compliment to Justin or not.
I'm still not sure.
It was. It was.
I, I happen to.
You're on the board, Justin.
Sorry, go ahead, Colin.
I happen to sit in on the meeting that most of this happened, and you can see the teamwork that Aaron's talking about, and I think that's what he's trying to get across to everybody here, is that there's great teamwork between this group of individuals that's working for the city.
Thanks.
Thanks, Colin.
Thanks, Colin. Yeah, thanks for bringing us back. Appreciate that. Uh, anything else? Again, that was the first reading, so we'll, we'll see this at the second meeting also. All right, uh, next up, we have Elm Street Design Engineering Services. Justin, you're still up?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Uh, page or sheet thirty-four of the packet is the beginning of the memo, uh, followed by supporting documents and a proposal. Probably one to, to keep a close tab on, Aaron, would be thirty-six, that shows the corridor. So this is for design services for our next road project, Elm Street, which, uh, is going to be from Highway Forty-nine, uh, back to Holbeck, uh, or if you prefer Delicious Avenue. Um, so this is slated for design during this year. Get some, uh, get a design ready, and I'll for bids over the winter time, and then construction in twenty twenty-five. Uh, this design is for roadway. We also have sewer and water and some other items of interest in this, uh, project. So, like usual, we put out an RFP, a request for proposals, uh, to firms that we are comfortable with and we've worked with in the past, uh, sent those out and received, uh, three back, uh, in March. Uh, the results of those are at the bottom of the memo on sheet thirty-four, uh, Cedar Corp, Gremer, and Strand. Uh, and as you can see, they all scored, uh, fairly well with the pricing laid out there, uh, with Cedar Corp being the low of the three. Uh, with this RFP in this project, I did it a little bit different, uh, where I threw in some add-ons or some items that I was not sure if we'd need or not, and the reason for that is, um, as I'll get through it, just wanted to make sure we were seeing more detailed numbers, uh, to see if the cost matched up with the benefits. So, the first one is Geotech, which is just doing soil borings. Uh, we do not do that on every single road. We did it on Main Street because that was part of the DOT process. It's pretty much a requirement, and they, uh, they want to see that subsurface properties of the soil to help with their design. And, and usually, we lean on our experience of knowing what's underground, and we just tell the designers what to do. Um, here, the reason why there's a change is because we have a section where we have beam guard, uh, right next to some wetlands. Uh, it is near a pond. We have a section where we're potentially adding, uh, additional sewer. Um, and, well, we're also adding some, um, or redoing some water main as well. So, uh, looking at this, I think that there is a need to do this, uh, because the soil properties could change as we go down. So we typically think we have sa- sand-type soil here. Uh, since we're near this pond and some of these other issues, we're going to want to know if those things change, those property values, because it does change the way you build, uh, infrastructure underground. Uh, beam guard slash storm sewer add-on, now that is on the sheet, if you want to scroll a little bit, Aaron, please, in the orange. So we have this dip in the road. It has beam guard, uh, and a severe drop-off, and then some potential wetlands around it. Now, we would like to get rid of that beam guard and add some fill in there. It would make for a much safer section. But there's some question marks there. We're potentially filling in a wetland. Uh, there could be some high cost associated with that, and that was, well, it could be high design cost, but then also high construction cost, and that was the main reason I, I called that out separately. Uh, the next piece is sanitary sewer extension, so, uh, from Wesley Street to the west. All those homes on Elm Street are not on city municipal sewer. They're on their own private septic. So we want to explore the idea of, uh, grabbing onto that existing manhole of the Wesley Street intersection, extending that west. And again, with the topography change there, uh, there could be some challenges. Um, we think we can extend that out and maybe pick up a home or two, but we need to do a little extra digging, um, in order to finalize that and get that into plans. Um, and you, you see from the table, that was a very efficient, uh, exploration as far as the engineers go. Uh, the next one and last one is the bike and pet analysis. So we have the River Ridge Trail that, uh, parallels Elm Street on the west side. It comes up to Wesley Street and then largely disappears. And we have a narrow roadway section, and then finally, um, sidewalk picks up near the foundry. So we have this narrow section that's pretty tight with homes nearby, uh, so we want to explore what's the best option. So, it would make sense to put forth a little bit more effort at the pre, in the beginning stages of the development, to explore several different configurations. Uh, because of the, the, the way the corridor is, we have topography on both sides. We have houses that are close to the road. Um, certainly, we need to consider a potential sidewalk, a trail, a widened path. Uh, we've done things like that on High Street and then also Evans Street. But we need just a little extra effort to make sure we can fit that in before, uh, we move too far into design. So. Um, so a lot of times, I would just take these things and put them right into an RFP, and here, like I said, I split them out, um, just so I could make sure we were doing the right thing. So, um, I think the value is there, and, uh, with the bids, the numbers where they came in, uh, Cedar Corp being the low of just under seventy-nine thousand, it fits within our budget. Uh, so I'm recommending Cedar Corp, whose proposal is included within, knowing that the funding for this is coming out of, um, three different sources, the general obligation bonds, water revenue bonds, and then also sewer revenue bonds.
Okay. Anybody, go ahead, Scott.
Justin, being that I live on that street, I'm wondering about that beam guard. Is, are they going to analyze whether we need one or don't need one? Because there still will be a drop-off, and I worry somebody will down off it.
Right. So if we, if we just said we want to eliminate it, their response back would be like, okay, it has to have a certain taper, slope. Uh, and that's what we, that's what that extra analysis is, is going to look at. Like, we get rid of it, what is that going to do? And certainly, your, the fill you bring in is going to widen things out and then potentially fill in wetlands or low areas, stormwater areas, so.
They'll mitigate, if you do it that way, they'll mitigate the severe drop-off. It'll be a slope, that is what you're saying, if it goes that direction.
Right. And then, uh, that's, and again, the reason split it off is we'll do a little extra analysis, and we'll look at the, like, an estimate of like, okay, so if we go forward with this, you're extra permitting, extra construction, you know, that sort of thing, and then we can make a determination halfway through design.
Good enough.
Justin, is that split equally between the three?
Oh, the funds?
Yeah.
Uh, no, it is not. Um, dang. It is, if you give me a second. Steph, do you remember, was that sixty-five in the general for Elm Street?
Sorry. Should have asked before.
It was seventeen thousand each for the utilities, and then the remaining was.
Seventeen, you said?
Seventeen thousand each for the utilities.
Okay.
And then the remaining was Geo.
Okay.
Seventeen.
Thirty-four, so that would be fifty-four six seventy-five? Or, no, forty-four. Sorry. I'm good with math, of course. All right. Henry, you had a question?
Yes, sir. Um, what's the right-of-way through there, Justin? Is there going to be any kind of right-of-way acquisition you think you're going to need?
It, it's a, it's a sixty-six-foot right-of-way, so we should be good. It feels different. It feels narrower.
Yeah, it does, for sure.
The only place I could see a potential need would be in this beam guard section. If we, if we got rid of the beam guard and had to fill in, we might be asking for temporary easements, which we've done in the past. It's fairly simple.
Paul, you had something?
Yeah, uh, any chance with this project of getting sanitary sewer over to the proper, to the city properties on Ballard? I mean, it's kind of close by.
No.
Well. Okay.
You want the long answer? You like the short answer?
No, the short answer's fine.
Okay.
You know, what would help that is if there ended up to be development on the other side of Ballard Street going down the way, then you might see it happen in the future.
Right. To get sewer down that, we need a lift station down there one way or another. So, it's a whole nother project.
Am I done on this side? Anybody on this side? Okay, so, uh, Justin is recommending that we go with Cedar Corp, uh, and the, the total amount is seventy-eight thousand six seventy-five. Seventeen thousand will come out of, uh, the water fund, seventeen out of the sewer fund, and then forty-four thousand six seventy-five will come out of, uh, the Geo Borl. Is that right?
Yes.
Am I saying that right? Okay. Anybody would like to make that motion?
So move.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Porczatski, that we ma- that we approve that. Any discussion? Uh, Barbara, let's call the roll.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Justin, it looks like you're still up. We got, uh, Went Lift Station, home pre-replacement.
Jared might have me on ordinances, but I creamed in a memo, so the next memo is on seventy-one. Again, the information's up front. The, uh, pictures in the submittals are after that. Page seventy-three shows the lift station. This is Went Lift Station, and it is in our east end, out in Industrial Park. It serves everything north of Royalton Street that is, uh, bordering Went Drive. So, uh, you see Presto Products there and everything to the north of that. This lift station, um, is actually fairly small compared to our other ones, but it's important. It serves multiple properties in our industrial park. Uh, it was first installed in two thousand eight, and it's been giving us some issues over the last several years. Uh, this wastewater staff has had to go out there and do a lot of extra maintenance on the pumping, or the pumps, excuse me. Uh, these pumps are submersible pumps, meaning they are always underwater. And, um, they are set in place on a railing, and then they basically set onto, um, basically onto a gasket, which then pushes water out into the force main. Throughout the last few years, that railing has broke, uh, which means it makes it very difficult to get these pumps in and out and to do that extra maintenance. We have a check valve on all of our force mains, and a check valve basically prevents water from going one way, so we want to push it upstream. We don't want it to come back into the lift station. That is broken, so the runtimes on these pumps have increased dramatically. So typically, we'd see maybe two, maybe three hours a day of runtime. Now it's upwards of three, or, excuse me, seven to eight hours of running time. So we have these pumps that have been giving us issues, and they're running three to four times more than that, what they should. Uh, we have issues with, uh, the railing and also with the plumbing. So, uh, with that, the guys have started looking, uh, for replacing this equipment. So we did receive three proposals, um, from companies we are comfortable working with. Uh, those are listed within the memo. Sabal Mechanical is the low of the three. Um, and if you can scroll down, Aaron, please, to seventy-eight, uh, which would provide new pumps and a new railing. So this details, on the right is the old railing, the left is the proposed new. It's going to be a little more beefier, so it should hold up long-term, uh, handle, uh, it should handle more loads and pressure from the pumping and maintenance. If you scroll down again, the pumps were upsizing, so what's out there now are three horsepower. We're moving up to five, uh, which means right now, um, you know, our industrial park has a little bit more growth to it, so we'll be set up, uh, for the current flows, but then we're also ready, uh, for future build-outs. I think that pretty much details it, so I'm looking for approval, uh, to go with Sabal Mechanical, which is the low, and this is coming out of our, uh, maintenance fund.
Okay, uh, you heard the recommendation, which is on. You heard the recommendation, which is on page seventy-one of your packet. Justin is recommending that we go with Sabal Mechanical for this work at a cost not to exceed twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Olson, second by Martin. Discussion. Barbara, call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczowski?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Justin, thank you. You can rest for a little bit now. Next up, we have update on the City of Opaqah Title VI Plan.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Counsel on page eighty-four of your packet, you'll see a memo. Just a little background, this is in relation to our latest compliance review on our fifty-three eleven federal transit funding. We actually had the compliance review back in November of two thousand twenty-two. We did that with a third-party auditor. Also, the Wisconsin DOT was involved and as well as our service provider, which is Running Inc. We actually did not get the results of that compliance review until, I think, beginning of March, and we're just working on checking some items off the list. This is the one thing that needs council approval as far as that action plan. The Title VI Plan is basically a plan that shows that there are things in place to make sure that people are not discriminated based on race, color, or national origin. And we have had this plan in place. Actually, one of our council members did update this plan last, or maybe even created the plan, in two thousand fourteen, and this is just an update off of that. A couple of things that I think are worth mentioning in the updates are some of the language barriers. We have had a, we still don't meet the threshold for having to provide a number of the language requirements. However, our demographics do suggest that there are some more non-English speaking individuals and there are some tools in place in this plan to make sure that we can communicate with them as efficiently as possible. One of those things is an actual contracted language line. Still trying to figure out actually when the most appropriate time to use that is. So, right now, a lot of our departments have been using Google Translate and it's been sufficient in many instances, but there are instances in which Google Translate is not legally sufficient. And we are still waiting our attorney's opinion on when we should use what, because obviously, Google Translate, there's no cost to that, the language line there is, and it's actually pretty minimal. And I wouldn't imagine using it a ton at this point. That could change in the future. There are a couple of other things, tools in here. There are complaint forms that we had to update if someone does feel like they were discriminated against based on any of those things. There's a process in place, as you can see outlined in the plan. This is something department heads that will be going over. There are a couple of little tools that you guys might find helpful as a result of this, just in your everyday activity, and we'll go through that at a future department head meeting. But ultimately, this was reviewed by the DOT. They said, yeah, absolutely, this looks fantastic. Now, you just need to send it to council and all of the other things on the checklist, which I believe I put, oh, my computer froze. Uh-oh. There we go. All right, well, I'm having trouble navigating, but there is a checklist attached to this memo. All of those are administrative. They have also been turned in to the DOT and they've approved that as well. So, we would just be looking for city council or requesting that you guys approve this update to the Title VI Plan for the City of Opaqah. And of course, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anybody have any questions?
Move to approve.
Second?
Was by Martin, second by Peterson, that we approve of the update to the City of Opaqah's Title VI Plan. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczowski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Next up, we have a contract renewal between the Humane Society of Opaqah County and the City of Opaqah for two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-six. Aaron, you again.
Yeah. Thanks again, Mayor. Council members, this one's on page one sixteen of your packet. Pretty brief, really, there is no changes whatsoever to the operational portion of the agreement. There are changes in the flat rate fees, which do impact our budget a little bit. You can see there, flat rate fee for feline, per feline is moving from one oh seven to one twenty-four, and then for a canine, from one seventy-six to two oh four. Did have a conversation with Monica Gardner, who's the director over there, and it is all inflationary related, like many of the things we've seen. We do have it budgeted. We feel like we can cover it in the amount that is budgeted for the two thousand twenty, I'm sorry, I put two thousand twenty-two, I meant the two thousand twenty-three budget, five thousand dollars. Was budgeted in two thousand twenty-three, let me go backwards, but in two thousand twenty-two, we only expended twenty-seven hundred. So, even with those increases, if you extrapolate it out from a percentage standpoint, we should be more than okay. And then the other important part, the department that has the most contact with the Humane Society is our police department, because many times, they get the calls to take them over there. In a conversation with Chief Ozell, he had nothing but positive things to say about that. There has been some things done by the Humane Society that have alleviated some pressure and some operational time at our police department, so all that has been good. And he suggested, too, that we would approve entering into this contract for the next three years, as you can see, through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
All right. So, Aaron is recommending that we extend our agreement with the Opaqah Humane Society with those increases in cost. Go ahead, Dimitri.
Is that the cost to care for the animal or to euthanize them?
To care for the animal.
Okay.
As I understand.
Indefinitely, until they get adopted?
Yeah. I'm not sure how long they hold them, but yes, to care for them until they hopefully find a new owner.
Anybody like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut, that we approve the contract between the Humane Society of Opaqah County and the City of Opaqah, beginning May first, two thousand twenty-three and running through April thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six. Any further discussion? Barb again, we'll call the roll.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczowski?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Barbara. Aaron, thank you. Next up, we have License Report sixteen eighteen. This is just a change in agent for the QuickTrip, so we'd need a motion to approve that new agent for a Class A intoxicating liquor license and Class A fermented malt beverage license. Anybody want to make the motion?
Some move.
Motion by Chestnut?
Second.
Second by Hagan, that we approve License Report sixteen eighteen. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no, motion carried. Then we have License Report number sixteen nineteen. Sorry, I'm a page behind here. This is a operator's license. These are subject to background checks, of course, but we only have one person on here this month, so we'd need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Peterson?
Second.
Second by Chestnut, that we approve License Report number sixteen nineteen, operator's license. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no, motion carried. All right. Again, I just asked that we move the mayor's recommendations up before we go into closed session, and I just have a couple of things real quick. And these individuals, of course, will be sworn in at our reorganization meeting on April eighteenth, but I did want to congratulate Dimitri Martin, Colin Dykstra, Paul Hagan, Scott Porczowski, and our newest member, Corey Nagel, for their two-year terms on city council. So, congratulations to you guys and thank you for being a part of this. And then, also, I think some of you might know where you, but Lori Chestnut was also elected to the school board, so congratulations to you, Lori.
Thank you, baby.
And then, and I'm going to let Aaron explain these again to you, too, but I've had a couple of council members get back to me on if they want to be on any committees. Now, we do have a few new committees, plus we've discussed what you guys have not approved yet, another committee, too, that we are going to be making appointments to also. So, once you hear what Aaron says, if you're interested in any of those committees, let me know. We're going to, we're going to put it together next week so that it's ready for the reorganization meeting. If you don't let me know, you might end up on a committee that you aren't quite as happy. So, if you don't want to be on a committee, let me know also. That's fine. But I, so I just want to make sure that those committee members, it's made up of members that have full council participation in them. So, you want to explain the new ones? You guys know the older ones, of course, city planning, police and fire, airport, parking rack, historic.
Preservation, board review.
Library, sorry, Eric.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of them. We're going to see all of them in ordinance form, actually, probably next meeting.
So, go ahead.
The couple new ones, thanks, Mayor, actually, three new ones. So, we've talked a little bit about two of the new ones, and that is the Personnel Committee. And I'll just talk about the purpose of that, what we're looking at. The Personnel Committee, we're looking to primarily be an ongoing committee. A lot of times, committees are created for things like the deer hunt, right? And maybe committees have a term that ends eventually. Well, these are going to be longstanding committees, ongoing committees. So, this Personnel Committee would help with the update of the City of Opaqah Employee Handbook. That's one of their big, big jobs. And potentially, another project that we'll be discussing in the future, too. The other one is a Public Engagement Committee, and the purpose of the Public Engagement Committee is to just make sure we're taking every intentional effort, both as staff and elected officials, to educate the public on city initiatives, but also have the public educate us on their wants and priorities. That may be done through community conversations, through focus groups, through events like the Halloween party, anything like that. Could be surveys, and I think those are all things for that committee to kind of decide on and make their own. The other one that we didn't mention in the past is Water and Sewer Utility Board we are looking to create. That will also be in the draft ordinance that we'll look to consider. Just in conversations with Justin and the mayor, Stephanie, I think it just makes, we think it's, makes sense to have a board that really looks over the financial operations of the utilities. It's different, right? They run like a business. They're their own enterprise funds and it runs differently than the city. So, we wanted council to consider that when we bring it forward. You'll notice, we'll try to talk about this, I think, before the actual appointments, and we will slot people in to be appointed to these new committees, even though it's not adopted in ordinance form. We can appoint people to those committees contingent upon the ordinance being passed, because it's going to take two readings. The ordinance won't be passed likely till May. So, just a little, that's just a little information on how that will look.
Yeah, and just to add to that, you know, these committees are set up, but council has final approval. So, anything that these committees do, they, this will be recommended to council. Okay? Everybody understand? So, if you get an opportunity, you know, just shoot me an email or give me a call and we'll move forward from there. Anybody else have anything? I think that's all I have. How about those brewers? Yeah. So, we're going to go into closed session. Department heads, except for Barb and Aaron, can actually leave once we go into closed session. But we would need a motion to go into closed session.
Eat up those leftovers.
Motion by Hagan?
Second.
Second by Olson, that we motion into convening to closed session in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, nineteen point eight-five parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, more specifically, the hiring of the city clerk. Any discussion? Barb, you got to call roll. You got to call roll to find out if you're going to get a job or not.
Maybe my last time.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczowski?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. We are in closed session.